Like son? Alright, just use a knock. The governing board meeting of Woodland Community Consolidated School District fifty of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five will now come to order. Will the board secretary please call the roll?
Brianna. Amy.
Here.
Joel here. Carla?
Here.
Julia?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Sorry. I lost, I lost Brianna.
The call cannot be completed and styled. Please consult your directory and call again or ask your-
Okay.
After you stop.
You travel halfway around the world and then gets back.
How about you? Don't want something this big? No wonder. Yes. Yeah, I'm planning to go to work for three days.
Ah, yeah, I'm sorry we dropped this somehow, but um. Okay, Brianna's back.
Brianna? Roll call. Okay, we have six members.
Uh, the board will enter into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who are independent contractors, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor, or a volunteer of the district, or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the board of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated, and also a student discipline issue. Okay.
So move.
Oh yeah, can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
So move.
Second. How about Carrie? Roll call vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes. Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion Carrie's six zero.
Hopefully no one listens to it because there's two starts and stops.
If you're here for a citizen's statement or a public comment, can you please sign up on the sheet in the back? Well, we need you to sign up on the sheet back here.
Oh, I spilled all the way myself. Good for me.
I went to Chicago while not.
Okay, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know what that means. What type of?
Mics on? All right, board members, make sure your mics are on, please. Okay, welcome everyone to the September twenty-fifth governing board meeting. May I have a motion to return to open session?
I move to return to open session.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote? Brianna?
Yes.
Amy?
Here.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Motion carries six zero. The open session of the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five governing meeting will now come to order. Laura, will you call the roll?
Brianna? Amy?
Here.
Joel?
Here.
Carla?
Here.
Julia?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Mike? We have quorum.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by the District Fifty facilities managers.
So as our crew is making their way up, I just wanted to acknowledge not only the work of our, this team, but also our entire operations and facilities team in getting all of our schools and our grounds ready for the opening of the school year. Buildings look fantastic. I know I've talked a lot about how I really think it's a sign of respect for our staff and our families and our students to have our buildings that are clean, free from graffiti, with everything working. And thank you guys. You guys do a wonderful job and it's great, Mr. Cho and Mr. Gonzalez, to be able to, and Mr. Afaro who could not be here tonight, Mr. Admick, but to be able to celebrate you guys and thank you in front of the entire community for the job that you all do. So, so thank you very much.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Thank you guys.
We met with an Illinois Association School Board field representative in August to develop board agreements and we'll be discussing the development of the agreements later in the agenda. Until the board adopts new agreements, we will be sharing the district's mission and building statements. Our mission is Woodland District Fifty empowers our children to reach their potential by providing exceptional learning experiences that foster critical thinking and a nurturing learning community. Our vision, together inspiring tomorrow's creators, thinkers, and leaders. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
What?
Motion carries six zero.
Tonight, we are required to have a public hearing prior to the consideration of adopting the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Let the record reflect that this is the budget hearing conducted by the Board of Education of Woodland Community Consolidated School District Number Fifty, Lake County, Illinois pursuant to section seventeen dash one of the school code. For the record, the board approved the preparation of the budget in tentative form on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and made the tentative budget available to public inspection for more than thirty days prior to any final action. On July eighth, twenty twenty-four, notice was published in the Daily Herald of tonight's public hearing and of the availability of the tentative budget for public inspection. Further notice of tonight's hearing and the availability of the tentative budget for inspection was posted on the district's website and placed on public display in the district's office for more than thirty days. At this time, does the administration wish to make any comments?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and of the public. Welcome to the budget hearing for fiscal year twenty-six. Just the cover page, we go over this pretty much every time. This is the sequence of events that led to this night. In May, we had a preliminary budget. In June, there was tentative budget approval with a budget presentation. We did updates in between then and now. We also had it published in the newspaper and now we have the budget hearing tonight. When the board approves the budget, then it'll be a trip to the Lake County courthouse to file it within the next thirty days. So, as always, we like to jump right in. I know the numbers are pretty small up there, so bear with me and listen closely. Just taking a look at the fiscal year twenty-six revenues. You can see that the revenues are anticipated to go up by about two point three million dollars. There are some shifts in some of the funds. The education fund, you can see, goes up by about two point eight million dollars. That is not uncommon. That's where most of the expenditures come from. When you take a look at the pie chart to the right, that, a lot of that comes from tax dollars and then there is also a shift in evidence-based funding dollars. If you go down that list, there's nothing that's extremely out of the ordinary. You can see that the debt service has gone up by eight hundred thousand dollars. That's part of the principal and interest repayment schedule that we are on. That is actually going to continue to grow for the next couple of years before it flattens out and then dips down just slightly until all of the bonds are paid off. You can see that the transportation, we shifted so evidence-based funding dollars over to transportation. That's based off of the events that happened last year with the expenditures and the increased amount of third-party transportation. We know that with the purchase of the vans and the continued purchase, because we still have one more to go, initial outlet is going to be a little bit higher this year, but we still believe there's going to be a savings. When you look at the difference between the last year, you can see that we are up, but last year was actually underbudgeted because we weren't anticipating those costs being so high. So we believe we're right at where we need to be. And knock on wood, everything goes well with transportation and our brand-new van drivers and brand-new vans. Capital projects, you can see, went down by three point six million dollars. In the previous year, we shifted dollars over to capital projects. We had a higher amount of projects that we were handling. That money is now going back into the education fund and back into transportation where we believe it's needed most. You can see that local revenues went up by three point six million dollars. And you can see that the state revenues went down by one point one million and then the federal revenues went down by a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. Local revenue largely, primarily made up of those property taxes. The state revenue, that big decrease, well, we'll get to those slides in a little bit. A lot of that is the amount of dollars that are shifted over to the state authorized charter school. And this year, once again, we lost a larger chunk of that. We're also anticipating a little bit of a decrease in the transportation categorical, as well as some of the special ed categoricals. Federal funds down a hundred and thirteen thousand, no surprise. We talked about it earlier this year. Were they going to release funds for Title I? Were they going to release funds for the idea grant? They wound up releasing them, but they did cut them a little bit. So this is just more of a descriptive of what I probably just went over. It gives you some percentages in there. You can see that local taxes make up ninety, or property taxes make up ninety-three point two percent of all of our local taxes. Not uncommon for a school district in our area and in our situation. We do have interest payments and corporate personal property replacement taxes, which make up the bulk of the remainder. After that, you're talking about things like registration fees and other types of fees. State is made up primarily of that evidence-based funding and the transportation claim. Like we said, I think the transportation claim is going to come down a little bit from where the budget was last year. And then evidence-based funding is going to go down as well. This year, the state did release or did approve an extra three hundred and seven million dollars into evidence-based funding. But as you'll also see later, we are now in tier four. The state believes that we are at a hundred percent of where we need to be in terms of revenues for our district and our district population. The charter school has a, we'll talk about that a little bit later, too. A lot of it has to do with the charter school and how they combine us both together. Federal, federal went down a little bit. Most of it comes from your idea grant and your title grants with and the National School Lunch Program. No big shifts in there. We talked already about how it's coming down just a touch. Here's a slide, two slides based off of the charter school. This year, once again, it's a significant decrease in revenue for us. So like I said, we are listed now at a hundred percent. That is tier four. That means our new tier funding dollars are coming down. They used to be in the six figures. Our new tier funding this year is five thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, all of which is going to go to Prairie Crossing Charter School. On top of that five thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, they're going to receive another additional six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's based off of our per capita tuition cost. We all know that there's that charter school funding formula. We all know we're trying to change that formula because it's not necessarily in our eyes fair. I'm sure in Prairie Crossing's eyes, it's extremely fair. So our district is going to wind up losing quite a bit of state money and Prairie Crossing is going to gain. is going to gain. And I added this slide in this year. This is just the history since evidence-based funding started. You can see the blue line, which is Woodland, and you can see that orange line, which is Prairie Crossing, and their revenues. Their revenues have actually increased by 55% since 2018, where ours are down 23%. If you take a look, we have demographics up there as well. Our demographics, from our limited English proficiency to our low-income students, have increased from 20% to 31%, and 36% to 42%, respectively. Prairie Crossings are at 7% and 6% back in 2018, and their change was up 1% to 8% and down 1% to 5%. So, their demographics have stayed relatively the same. Our demographics have changed a little bit. Their funding has gone up significantly. Our funding has gone down. More to come on that next month. We'll jump into expenditures now. There's not a lot of surprises in expenditures either. We can see that the vast majority of the increase from the last year's budget goes to the Education Fund. You're talking salaries, you're talking benefits. Salaries are via this collective bargaining agreement. Our medical insurance is through our cooperative. The increases were in the 6% for both the PPO and HMO, leading to those additional expenditures. Operations and maintenance, same thing. Not too many surprises. Debt service, just like on the revenue side, on the debt side, it has to go up because we actually have to make those principal and interest payments. So, there's where that additional $800,000 comes in. The decrease, the significant decreases in the capital projects. We do not have as many capital projects scheduled this year as we did in the previous year. You will see a sheet on capital projects. We'll go over that a little bit as well. But there, the decrease down there, just like the revenue side, we decreased the revenue side by over $3 million. We're decreasing the expenditure side by $2.6 million in our estimation. Bottom pie chart shows you where it's going. Most of it goes to salaries and benefits, and then followed by purchase services, supplies, and equipment. And the lesser ones would be debt service and tuition and private placement. So, this is more of lots of words on this page, just giving you kind of an overview of where the money goes. Salaries and benefits, we talked about, what the increases were according to the collective bargaining agreement, and the increases in medical and dental expenses. Purchase services, we have some large purchase services, some being the food service program, some being our insurance, as well as our custodial cleaning services. Those are the large ones. Bus leases is in there as well, and we have copy machines. Then you have the smaller purchase services that you get all year round. Lots of them do with operations and facilities, or even things like software goes into, into this category. Supplies and equipment at $7.3 million. We have dedicated just a little bit less than a million dollars. That's going towards education. That's going towards professional development. That's going towards consumables, and those items for training and curricular materials. We talked about the vans as well. We estimated $225,000. We're coming in pretty much on par with that. That is going to take place in this year, even though we purchased some of those vans over the summer. Our capital projects being down to 4 million. In August, I think we had, I shouldn't say "I think," I presented a written plan to the Board of Education talking about how we believe we would have about 4.9, 4.8, 4.9 million dollars. We did some revisions. We took some out. We added some back in for a little bit less cost. But some of the capital projects, as you will see on the next slide, are going to begin in the fiscal year 26 year and continue on into fiscal year 27 because that's how summer projects work. They just go over years, and some of those are actually going to be a little bit more significant. Debt service is just the principal and interest where we are up to, and the majority of the other comes from our out-placed students paying our tuitions for our out-placed kiddos. We need bigger screens. These are a lot of projects that we've got going on here, and some of them are smaller. You know, we did the playground resurfacing at primary school. We're actually planning on doing playground resurfacing at intermediate school this year. We want to take advantage of the timeframe because we are also looking at doing the fourth and final asphalt replacement. We've done South Campus. We just did middle school as well. So, we're going to be replacing all of the asphalt, including the drive. That is our drive out there over the summer if the board approves, obviously. There's going to be limited expenditures that actually come out in fiscal year 26. There's going to be whatever they can get through. There's always a timing issue with the invoices that we receive because we need them a week and a half in advance, and depending on when the board meeting is June. So, we will try to hustle to get them as quickly as possible based on the work that is being done. The good thing this year is that we are going to be out of school by the end of May, so hopefully they'll be able to start in early June and get a head start on where they normally would have in the past. We've got controller replacements. We're going to have to do this systematically, school by school. They're outdated, and they need replacement, and there is a lot of them, and they cost a lot of money.
Sorry, say that again. What's outdated?
Controllers. Yeah, they are for our HVAC systems. Yeah, so, pretty much every one of them, based off of the system that we use within Siemens, the Dosego system, they are all pretty much out of date. We'll start replacing them slowly. We'll do them school by school. We will still have spares. They will still work for a little while, but we want to get them updated because we don't want to get into a situation where all of a sudden they're not supported anymore. We've got more door replacements like we had last year. Doors are very, very expensive, and we've got a lot of doors that need replacing. We've done some sidewalk work. We've finished up with our, hopefully, our final sound project over this past summer. I know there's a couple of things on here that were on here last summer that we didn't get to until this past summer, like the ovens. We still have the dishwasher project that we want to do, placement doors, light poles. There's a lot of project. ONF is going to be very busy, once again, thanks to, if they're still here, our facilities managers, who are going to have a very, very busy year. What it all amounts to is essentially a little bit over $4 million that is going to be scheduled for fiscal year 26. And if you look at that last column on the right, those are going to be the carryover projects. You're looking at your asphalt project. You're looking at the past month, we were authorized to go out to bid for HVAC replacement here at the ESC. That's going to carry over because we won't be able to do that until the summer. And then on there as well, we have what's called the Facilities Master Plan. That's something that's going to let us know what our equipment looks like, not only the next five years, 10 years. It's going to give us a timeline for replacement. They're going to go through room by room. They're going to look at flooring. They're going to look at ceiling. They're going to look at the walls. They're going to look at HVAC, all of the electrical, all of that. The plan that we've been planning on doing for quite some time, we haven't gotten around to. We've had short-term plans, but now is the time to make a long-term facilities plan. In here is budgeted for the Cadillac of plans. If you know anything about me, we're probably not going to go with the Cadillac of plans. So, but it'll still be a thorough plan, trust me. That's capital projects in a nutshell. The slide that we always show, where are we going to wind up when it's all said and done, projecting $2.1 million deficit, but that is with the capital projects. So, the capital projects are going to be $4 million. So, you can take a look at that and say, well, that's actually not that bad because we're spending down our working cash fund for those capital projects when we transfer it over to, from working cash to our capital project fund. One of the pieces of that is that you will see there's going to be a, in the debt service, a significant surplus, that 502,000, based off of the time when we levy till the time we actually pay the principal and interest. They are offset in years based off how the levy goes. So, that $500,000 revenue surplus isn't really a surplus in there. So, you can, you can take that $2.1 million, and it's going to be closer to 2.6 when it's all said and done, just operationally. This is something that is mandated. It's been here the last year, year and a half, two years. This just lets us know where our fund balance is in our four main funds, or our three main funds, I should say, education, operations, and maintenance and transportation. The state came out and said you cannot have more than 2.5 times your expenses sitting in, in your balance, in your fund balance in any of these funds. So, we go through this exercise. We're supposed to report it to the board. You'll see it again one more time after we get the audit back from fiscal year 25. This one, based off of the fiscal year 24 audit, is .66. So, we're not in danger of being at that 2.5 level. If you are at that level, you have to come up with a spending plan in order to spend it down. Now. Yes. Scrambling. Yes, yes, I do. That was the last piece of the budget, the fun, the fun mandate and the fun part. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Sure.
First of all, I don't think I saw that presentation in the packet.
You know, when we do presentations, I don't think presentations have actually gone into the packet, but I'm happy to send it out to you. Yes. Absolutely.
And then my other question is, what is our enrollment right now as of September 26?
And it was just sent to me, too. 4,200. Where's Kathy? Where's Kathy? Sherry, 4,200? Patricia? 4,200 district enrollment?
4,277.
4,277. I was going to say 4,211. That was close. 4,282.
4,282?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're holding compared to where we've been in the past, which is down 200, 300 kids in a year.
Then my other question is, now that we're considered, so, the tier for evidence-based funding, when did we go from Tier Three to Tier Four? When does that, when does that transition take place?
So, there were two transitions. When I first got here, we were Tier Two, and we transitioned into Tier Three, I want to say, two years ago, and this is going to be the first year that we are in Tier Four.
And that came into effect, was it July 1, or was it at the beginning of the school year? How does that work?
It would be July 1 because they, they base your evidence-based funding off of that, and you get paid twice a month starting in August. So, they have to have that all set to go prior to the start of the school year so they can get the payments ready. You'll get the two payments in August, and they go all the way through, all the way through July, June. Fun fact is that of the $307 million, all of the Tier Four schools get a tenth of a percent of that $307 million divided amongst them. A tenth of a percent of that $307 million gets divided among Tier Four schools.
And can you maybe explain to the audience what we mean when we're talking the tiers for evidence-based funding, just briefly?
Sure.
And I don't know if they know.
There, evidence-based funding, well, let's back up a second. Evidence-based funding is predicated on the, they are going to look at your district. They're going to look at your district demographics, and there's a formula that says, based off of your demographics, we believe this is the amount of money that you need, an evidence-based amount of money that you need to adequately fund the operations in this particular formula. So, they've broken it up into four categories, Tier Four, Tier Three, Tier Two, and Tier One. Tier Two is 90% and above. I have a Tier Four, or I'm sorry, Tier Three is 90% above. Tier Four is at 100%. Tiers One and Two get the majority of the new funding that comes out. And when the new funding came out, it was initially funded at $350 million a year additional that they wanted to put into educational spending and put into this formula. They've only had one pause, and that was during the first or second year of COVID. There was one pause where they said, we're not going to add the additional funding in with the goal that everybody's going to be at least 90% funded based off of their formula. It was initially by the year 2035, but I, that's, that's been pushed out because they would need to at least double the amount that they're adding to the educational budget in Illinois. So, if you are a Tier One, you are below, I want to say it's 68% funded, and of that 300 to 350 million that come out, those districts are going to receive 50% of those dollars to help try to push them up. So, their evidence-based funding, the money that they receive from the state is going to go up fairly significantly. Tier Two, they do this backwards. That's why I have to pause. Tier Two actually receives quite a big chunk of that money as well. I believe that's actually 49%, where Tier Three gets .9% and Tier Four gets .1%. So, as soon as you're past 90% and up to 100%, the amount of money that you get in addition to what you received the year before from the state drastically decreases from those Tier One and Tier Two levels. Did I explain that right? I always, when I was younger, I wanted to be a teacher, but then I found that when I explained things, in my head, they sound fantastic, but people sometimes get confused.
Yeah, because it's, the state is saying, we need, every kid should get 7,000. What is that formula?
Well, it's more complicated than that because, based off of the demographics, because they say there are three populations that, you know, you can correlate higher expenses with, and that is your special ed population, your English learners, and your low income. So, they take that into account and say, these are the additional dollars that you should be receiving on top of what you would otherwise receive for any, in the general formula. So, the goal there was, I mean, I think we all know this. There's, the state of Illinois was, the education is essentially founded on property taxes. So, if you're in a district or you happen to be in a location, and that location has either a lot of business or that location is very well-to-do, those schools had a lot more money coming in, and there's a lot more spent per student. And there's a lot of areas, maybe down south, rural, or urban areas, that have a lot less dollars being spent per student because they're not receiving as much because perhaps even if you're in an urban area, a lot of that, that money is tiffed, and it's not coming to you anyways. So, they want to get everybody on the same playing field if they can. It's going to take a while.
Any other, any comments from the board at this time? No? I just want to say thank you for being highly adaptive and strategic with our spending. Are there any comments from the public regarding the budget hearing? Okay, can we have a motion to close the public hearing on the budget?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Tonight, we have an athlete to celebrate. Dr. Maycheck, would you like to introduce the young man who placed at State?
I should. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Noah Afron. Besides just being a wonderful athlete and a great golfer, Noah is just a wonderful young man, and I want to say thank you for representing Woodland so well to the entire state and showing sportsmanship and class, and just really what our district's all about. And very, very proud of you, and so glad to have you as a part of our community. So, awesome. I just brag on you a little bit. So, at the sectionals, okay, Noah placed first out of 150, 200 golfers? So, yeah, oh, 500, I don't know. But Noah's, Noah's score for the back nine, the last nine holes was a 35. I mean, it's just amazing. So, finished first at sectionals, which allowed him to go to the state tournament to represent us, finished in the top 10 out of 100 golfers at State, and I couldn't be prouder of you, and I just want to say thanks. So, congratulations to you. So, we're going to, Ms. Paulbins is on the phone. So, she did not sign the certificate. So, we're going to take a picture with your certificate. I'm going to take it. Ms. Paulbins will sign it, and I will get it back to the middle school. Is that okay? So, come around.
Take a picture with, the board, take a picture with Noah? No, no, you stay there. We're going to come, yeah, they're going, yeah. Yeah, they're coming by you, yes.
How long have you been golfing?
Oh.
There, you go first. Congratulations. If I could, I just want to say thank you to the board and thank you to the district who's first courting programs like this.
The rest of the meeting is just exciting.
Well, it's programs like this, this is our third child, and our baby by eight years. So, our kids have gone through the programs, and I just want to say thank you because it's a major, major success. a major, major success for our, our enterprise.
Uh, tonight, Dr. Schroed, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, will share the student learning goals for year three of the strategic plan. Dr. Schroed, I understand you have a presentation?
I do. I'm excited to present to you an update on the academic portion of the strategic plan for this year. Um, I'm excited because we have made so much progress on our goals related to, this first area is about student identity and belonging, and this year, especially if you have kiddos still in the district, uh, the screen you're gonna see next will probably look pretty familiar to you, because last year, we piloted the cultural and heritage identity survey with our parent advisory groups and got feedback. This year, we're actually implementing a line to that timeline. Uh, we also have continued to support our new staff by having them participate in the Beyond Diversity training. We are now at two hundred and fifty-nine staff that have participated in Beyond Diversity, and I know Dr. Little will ask me how many of them have left. I remember. Um, of those two hundred and fifty-nine, we've had, over the course of time, sixty-eight that have retired or moved on, so that gives us a net total of a hundred and ninety-one of our staff, which is about twenty-five percent of our staff since we've started this initiative within the strategic plan. And we've also already started ahead-of-goal budgeting so that we have curricular resources that really represent our students within the district. You, as a board, have supported a new progress monitoring tool that's more appropriate for our multilingual learners, additional Spanish resources, et cetera, and so we're actually a little ahead on that portion of the goal. As I mentioned, if you are a parent in the district, you've probably seen this, because it just came out this fall. This is the Family Cultural Identity Information Survey, and that identity survey, I have to give an incredible shout-out to Brooke Hagstrom, who's always so helpful to us as we're trying to get the word out, has done a wonderful job communicating the importance of just getting to know families in our district so that we can better create spaces of belonging for all kids and all families. As we think about those resources, right, I, I mentioned the STAR progress monitoring that is more appropriate to our students that are multilingual learners. Our K-5 literacy committee is also meeting and writing curriculum, right? They've been doing that with a consultant to improve our reading curriculum and assessments. And we're also using evidence-based resource tools to help us identify the best resources so that when kiddos are in our classrooms, they see books that look like them. And not just books that look like them, but that are culturally relevant and responsive, right? So that kids that see themselves in literature also don't see themselves pigeonholed in the literature that we provide them. And so we're using resources like the culturally responsive scorecard as we're looking at resources so that we have the most culturally relevant resources for our students and teachers. As we continue to move through our academic and student belonging and identity sections, I'm excited, and I feel so supported by the leaders of every building, because another item that we have been working on in addition to finding culturally responsive resources and providing culturally and linguistically responsive professional development as part of our institute days and, and early release days, we have also been working across the teaching and learning department and with our building-level leaders to make certain that we're including student voice and choice. So we brought a student voice and choice survey to our principals, because we were supposed to implement this year, according to the strategic plan, with a pilot of third through eighth grade students. And my primary and my elementary principal said, we're gonna include our kids, too, and so I'm gonna apologize, I'm gonna go forward and then go back. So we have, you know, a kind of not-as-exciting student voice and choice for our older grades, for them to tell us what grade they're in and, and how, uh, they get to have choice within the class, either in books that they read or in ways that they demonstrate their proficiency. But my amazing peers at primary and elementary also created, uh, surveys that were much more appropriate for their audience to also get our littles' feedback on how often they get voice and choice in our activities. So again, above and beyond what we were asked to do this year, so that we can capture that voice and choice from pre-K through eighth grade and use that data and bring it back to you all in the spring. Uh, so we're excited about that. We're also very excited, and I'm gonna go to our next section. We mention, we'll mention several times here that as part of our new para, our evaluation process, we had this amazing para committee, which was equal of union leadership and administrative leadership, that really worked to realign our evaluation system for our licensed and certified staff. And as part of that work, we designed a learning visit tool where admin are going into classrooms at a minimum twice per trimester, six times per year, in addition to all the other kinds of informals and formals. But to really develop that relationship and rapport with teachers and students, know the classroom, know what's going on in there, and we're excited because several areas of the strategic plan call out the need for walkthrough data, right? How are we assessing whether cla, the classroom climate is conducive for all learners? And by working with the union leadership to develop a learning visit form, that allows us to not only develop that relationship, but also know what's happening in classrooms with teachers on a regular basis. And so we're excited that we have already started in the entire teaching and learning. I was on a learning visit with Nicole at primary today, um, and at intermediate yesterday, and so we've really enjoyed spending that time in the classroom. And we will not only be using those learning visits to learn more about our students and staff, but also about what professional learning do our staff need as we come in and visit. We're also very excited, there's a lot of excitement going on, right? We promised you that there would be a collective efficacy look-for embedded in the admin evaluation as well, because collective efficacy is such an important component of our strategic plan. We know that we need to build conditions where our admin and our teachers and other staff feel confident and competent. And so we have actually taken the time to work with principals and, and share this resource as well, which takes the components of how do school leaders create conditions for collective efficacy and ties it to the very learning standards that they implement as part of their evaluation every year. And so every year, building principals and APs develop their goals and, around the Illinois performance standards for building leaders, and now we have created that promised look-for tool to show how that ties to collective efficacy. And Dr. Maycheck, in his work with building principals, is enacting this as part of the evaluation process. So again, hitting that mark for implementing this year. Sorry for the back and forth. It, you'll also notice on the tool that it gives a column for the different pieces of evidence. So when a principal, when Dr. Maycheck comes out and observes a principal, or when a principal observes an assistant principal, they might provide meeting agendas or other notes to help document that process of developing collective efficacy. And then lastly, as we think about where we still have to head with the strategic plan, we have many items within the strategic plan that are currently under development. So we are working as a teaching and learning team to develop professional learning community systems, so ways in which staff can meet together to continue to deepen their confidence and competence. In fact, you all, as a board, helped support that goal by providing the funding for the letters PD that's happening this year, throughout pre-K through third grade, all classroom teachers, as well as pre-K through eighth grade, resource, I second ESL teachers, really investing in the very people who stand in front of our children every day. We are also working with our HR peers to make certain that our growth mindset is embedded in GCN by June of twenty twenty-seven, and continuing to take feedback from teachers and from administrators around professional development after every Early Learning Friday and every institute day to continue to improve based on their feedback. Oops. I, I, I will go here, sorry, really quickly. One of the ways that we've improved our systems is, in the district, every weekend, historically, uh, last year, I would send out emails to the different groups throughout the district and say, Ms. Plecha, exciting news, you are assigned to Truman Foreign Care next Friday. And now we have frontline, which we already use for so many other purposes, where we can store and house all the professional development that we've outlined in the strategic plan. Teachers can register for PD outside of the district as well as inside the district and give us that necessary feedback every week, and it's at our fingertips at the building level and the district level for us to take that feedback to improve. With that, if there are any questions from the board?
Would you be able to share this?
Absolutely. I will, I, Laura has a copy that she can share with the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia. Next, Chip.
Thank you for the presentation. The board invites members of the public to provide statements in person to participate. Uh, we have a sign-in sheet. Um, each person gets three minutes. Um, first on the list is Ms. Walinski. You can just say your name and relation to the district.
Sure. Hi, my name is Jan Walinski. I'm a taxpayer, a parent of a former Woodland student, former Woodland Foundation board member, current elementary teacher, and member of the union. I'm a stakeholder in this district. At the last board meeting, the word scoreboard was mentioned. At elementary, each classroom teacher is expected to greet all students at the door with a hello, fist bump, or a hug. Specials teachers, like myself, are to have five positive one-on-one interactions with students. These are to make students feel welcome and valued. No problem. Every teacher I know does this automatically many, many times. But here's the problem. Teachers are required to fill out an online form every day stating that they met these goals. Teachers are assigned to teams, and the responses and scores are posted on eighty-five-inch screens, just like these. They're in the teacher's lounge and the mailroom, and if your team records, all of them record a yes, it turns green. But if teachers forget, are too busy, or even absent, it records as a no, showing everyone you did not meet your goal, and it turns yellow or red. Teachers have named this the Board of Shame. Several years ago, teachers were told to stop using a student behavior system, using student clips that could be moved from green to yellow to red, because it caused shame with our students. But now this is being done to teachers. Every teacher I know greets students and has hundreds of positive interactions a day without being told to do this or fill out a form. That's why we got into teaching. I feel disrespected, untrusted, and made to feel less than by a scoreboard, as if that green, yellow, and red shows my worth as an educator. I have almost four hundred students, and I get to know them. The good stuff, the loose teeth, the birthdays, the soccer games, and the bad stuff, the death of a pet, the heartbreak of a parent who didn't show up after they promised to that weekend. I live here. I talk to the families in restaurants and stores all the time. I have more conversations in a day than I could ever keep track of, but if I don't record it, it doesn't count. I feel like I've let my team down, I'm embarrassed by a giant scoreboard and made to feel like a loser. I'm a very good teacher. I receive excellent evaluations. My students find success and happiness in my room. I've had board members' kids as students, I've had board members in my room for Leaders or Readers Day. I've invited admin to visit, and all said they enjoyed it. Then why am I made to feel shame and disrespect from a giant scoreboard? We know we have low staff morale and a hard time retaining staff, and the scoreboard of shame is only making it worse. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next, we have Mr. Walinski.
Good evening. My name is Tim Walinski. I live in Gurnee. I've had a child go through the district. My wife works in the district. I volunteered in the districts. I'm a stakeholder in the district as well. As a stakeholder, I'm disappointed with the current direction and current climate of the schools here. My first concern is the district's lack of ability to retain existing teachers and staff and the failure to recruit new teachers and staff as well. Current teachers and staff are leaving to find better employment opportunities for reasons that include low compensation and not feeling supported by the administration. This problem is not limited to your teachers, but also includes your administrators, who obtained their advanced degrees while working at Woodland, only to leave shortly after. Woodland currently has at least seventy open positions, and additionally, the district has subcontracted non-district employees to fill approximately twenty vacancies. Do these numbers really represent acceptable recruiting and hiring practices? My second concern is about the district relating to spending. At the last school board meeting, it was brought to our attention from a board member that ninety-two thousand dollars was spent to, on a consultant. I would like to know how much was spent on the Covey program that is currently being used throughout the district to change the culture. I would also like to know how much is being spent on these eighty-five-inch TVs that are being used to display the results of the scoreboard. My last concern is related to the four DX program. The four DX program includes all teachers and is being used to change a perceived lack of performance by every teacher in the district. If a hundred percent of the teachers are failing, that is strictly the fault of the district's administration. I find it impossible to believe that a hundred percent of your teachers are failing to meet standards for connecting with their students. Performance issues should be handled individually by administrators one-on-one with employees. What I would like to know is, does the four DX program align with your core principles of respect, ownership, accountability, and responsibility? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we invite Sue Hanson up to the podium.
Hi, are you planning to, is it working? Hi, if we need a, if we need a, if we need a, if we need a, is it working? I'm much better than you.
Here, you can use this one.
I got a good teacher voice and my, right? Can we see it?
Thanks, Laura.
We're good? Oh, okay. Uh, my name is Sue Hanson. I'm a first-grade teacher at elementary. I live in Woodland School District, and all three of my own grown children have gone through the district. I would like to start by saying that I do fully agree with everything Jan Walinski spoke about in regard to the scoreboard, um, and our direction for the red, yellow, and green ways we have been evaluated this year. Um, a lot of times when people come to talk at a board meeting, and we're brave enough, um, a few days later, we might be told we were the only people that thought that, or no one else has shared this concern. So I'd like for you to know that in terms of the scoreboard, the daily mandatory checking in, the public shaming, the majority of the staff that I interact with on a daily basis thinks the same way as Jan spoke to, so thank you. Um, I think it's one thing that is really attributed to the low morale and poor, poor climate and culture of our building. Um, I'm mainly here to speak to the board about the current, um, low salary schedule situation that's happening at Woodland, and this has nothing to do with me, because I am retiring this year. So there's no impact on this to me at all, but I'm here to speak for my colleagues and for the future of Woodland School. Uh, the bottom line is, the staff deserves better. Starting salary at Woodland is currently around poverty level. A family of four could not live on the starting salary at Woodland School. I am part of the union, and the union has given the board specifics about this salary, and although there was a slight offer made, it came with stipulations that were not acceptable in the long run. Without quality staff, you will not have quality education, and with the level of unfilled positions that continue to happen each year, as Tim even spoke about, your teachers are absolutely stretched to the max. The max. We're doing daily jobs and duties that are above and beyond what we should be doing, and I would think that the board would want your staff to be top-notch and ready to educate children each day. With the low morale, the low pay for teachers, and teachers feeling overwhelmed and unsupported... With the low morale, the low pay for teachers, and teachers feeling overwhelmed and unsupported, it may not be happening. All I want to see is Woodland offer the best for our children in our district. And I'm hoping that there are some changes on the horizon that will bring back the greatness that Woodland used to have. I just feel it's time for the board to show that you really truly care about your teachers and staff at Woodland. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have Katie Galavan.
My name is Katie Galavan, and I am a parent of a second grader and a kindergartner, both in the dual-language program here at Woodland. I'm also a teacher in a neighboring school district. At the start of the school year, days before school was starting, I was informed that the Spanish teacher my second grader was scheduled to have took a job with a different school district. The new Spanish teacher would be arriving sometime during the first semester, but there was no date given. Until then, my child would have a long-term sub. As an educator and a parent, this was very unsettling for me. As I began to ask questions and dig a little deeper into this problem, I came to find that there were over seventy unfilled positions in the Woodland School District. This begs the questions, why are so many teachers leaving? And why are there so many unfulfilled positions? One reason is very clear to me. If you can take a job a few minutes away and make twelve to fifteen thousand more to start, I myself would do the same. I learned Woodland School District has one of the lowest-paying teacher salaries in Lake County. This is unacceptable. The cost of living continues to rise at alarming rates, but salaries are not matching that. If we want what is best for our children and provide them with quality educators, then we need to pay teachers a respectable and reasonable salary. Our children deserve better. Our teachers deserve better, and our community deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you for public comments. May I have a motion to approve the following items listed on the consent agenda? Approval of human resources report information, approval of donations, approval of revised board policies, approval of Board of Education meeting minutes, approval of monthly financial reports, treasurer reports for the month of August, and board payable list for the month of September.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
There is one thing that needs to be changed in the open meeting minutes.
In the open meeting?
It is, yes, the open meeting minutes. Under Board Improvement and Operations, item B1, says after discussion, the board came to consensus to share the presentation November third, 2025 during a special meeting.
This is regarding the open meeting. It isn't a special board meeting. It's a administrative. It's just a presentation. It's not a board. It's a district administration is...
Where are you guys?
Page six from seven for the August twenty-eighth open regular minutes.
Are we on approval of the consent agenda?
Yeah, we're in discussion for approval of the consent agenda.
So under B1, on page six, it says that a special meeting, I refer to it as a special meeting, but that has legal implications. It's a, the district is sponsoring a town hall meeting that night.
I think you have to pull that out to discuss that separately. I mean, changes, you can't do that under consent. So if there's a question about it, it needs to come out of consent.
Okay.
So we're pulling...
Approval of the regular, of the open meeting minutes.
Under item D, twelve D?
Yes.
Approval of the, like, the governing meeting minutes or the first?
The governing meeting. Eight twenty-eight, right? Yes.
Closed session. And that's going to go where now?
Under action item, that would be C. Action item C.
Okay. Okay, C. It's going to be approval of August twenty-eighth governing meeting minutes. Anything else, Brianna?
No.
Okay. Carla?
Yes, I like the full item, twelve A.
On consent?
Agenda two would be discussed separately under an action item.
Okay. Okay, so we'll put that as D under action items. And that's the HR report. Okay, anybody else have changes? Was that all? Carla, for yours?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the, as mentioned, changes?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna? Brianna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
Now we're going to action items. Approval of the fiscal year twenty-six budget. There are four motions that need to be approved, which pertain to the final budget. May I have a motion to approve resolution number one, approving the budget for the fiscal period of July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Motion carries, six, zero.
May I have a motion to approve resolution number two, authorizing the resolution abating the working cash fund to the debt service fund in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
May I have a motion to approve resolution number three, authorizing the resolution abating the working cash fund to the capital projects fund in the amount of two million dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Brianna?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-six capital expenditure spending plan, including technology and facility purchases, as presented and authorize the district to proceed with capital expenditures, bidding, and general procurement as needed throughout the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Brianna?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Motion carries, six, zero.
May I have a motion to approve the addition of one full-time employee, paraprofessional to support student needs within the district's special education program for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
Okay, and then item C is approval of August twenty-eighth governing meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the August twenty-eighth governing meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that the meeting for November the third is not a Board of Education's special meeting. It's a district presentation regarding the impact of funding for Prairie Crossing on Woodland District fifty.
So we just need to make that edit?
Yes.
Explain that again. I'm looking at August twenty-eighth.
On page six, I believe it was, of the minutes, it refers to November sixth being a special meeting.
November sixth or August twenty-eighth?
It's the August twenty-eighth, this is the regular meeting minutes of August twenty-eighth. It's on page six of, or seven, right?
I just have two pages for August twenty-eighth.
I think you're in for the... Make sure you're not in holes. I just did the same thing.
Governing meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So then if you look at B, item B, near the top of that page.
B under...
Board Improvement and Status Requests.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Page six, alright.
And the first item is Prairie Crossing Presentation.
Okay.
So it says, after discussion, the board came to consensus to share the presentation during a special meeting, which technically it is because it's a meeting that we're calling for that purpose. But it's not a special meeting the way for, you know, Board of Education's special meeting.
So how would you classify it?
It's a district, I would classify it as district administration as...
Town hall?
Town hall meeting, yes.
This is a presentation that's open to the public, for the public?
Yes.
I think, you know, from a board perspective, you have a governing board meeting or you have a special board meeting. And under that special board meeting, you can have different types. But it's still considered a special board meeting because it's not the monthly governing meeting.
I think what we're saying, it's not a board meeting at all. It's a public meeting put on by the district to educate people about Prairie Crossing. It's not a board meeting.
But it's put on by the Board of Education.
No, it's put on by...
The board directed Mr. Bobek and me to develop and facilitate.
I think we're splitting hairs with this. It's, you know, it's a board-directed meeting regardless of who's presenting. I'm not sure why you don't want to just call it a special board meeting?
Because if it's a special board meeting, then we have to have quorum and we have to open meeting and close meeting.
Do you want to have an informational meeting for the public without it being a board meeting? So that we don't have to meet quorum and all that?
Oh, exactly. So that's the reason.
I guess we just want a public presentation to inform people about the current standing of our evidence-based funding and how that's increased over time.
Yeah, not unlike what Chris shared this evening.
I think we just want to make sure we have the right wording in the minutes. So is there a suggestion besides special meeting? Or Brianna?
I would suggest informational meeting.
Informational meeting?
I say work with IASB to make sure we're using the right terminology.
Okay.
Can we do that?
So do you want to...
I did notice a, an error on the closed meetings. It first has me listed as absent and then says I arrived at six oh six. I can't be voted. Wasn't it at the time of that first vote, absent and then later? No.
Okay, can we...
You weren't here for the roll call vote. That's why, for them to go, for the roll call vote to enter in the closed session.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we'll check with IASB about the wording for the...
Yeah, check on that, too. I've never seen that done before.
Are you referring to the special meeting or the closed?
Yeah, it has me as absent and then has me roll call present at, so that's not making sense to me. I want to make sure we're doing that correctly.
So what would be the motion for the August twenty-eighth governing meeting minutes? Or do we just table that and...
I don't, can we table the minutes or tell we have to?
I don't know because the minutes have to be closed in within ten weeks of the final, after approval. But I believe approval has to be done within thirty days of the previous meeting.
Well, I guess it's if the board wants to convene and make it a special meeting or does the district host an informational meeting where the board is not in session? Carrie?
Well, my fear is that we schedule this meeting, the community shows up, and then for whatever reason, all, we don't have quorum because something comes up with our lives, whatever. And then we can't have a meeting that we scheduled and everyone's here for. So I would say if we, if it doesn't need to be a special meeting, then let's not make it a special meeting so that we don't hinder the discussion.
I'm just saying, let's just make sure we're using the right terminology when we're scheduling the meetings. I think there might be some misunderstanding on that, and that concerns me. That we're, let's just make sure we're following the rules and the school code when we're scheduling meetings and using the right terminology. Let's not make it up.
No, that's fair. That's fair.
So do you want to table approval or is that what I'm hearing?
I think we need to until we have a clarification from IASB.
Okay.
And then we'll...
I mean, it's such a minor thing. I don't know that we hold up the meeting minutes for such a minor... You know, if anything, you can go back later and revise the, revise the name of the meeting. If that's a concern, I don't think we have to hold up an approval of the minutes just because we're not, we're unsure of definitions. That doesn't make sense to me.
So we have the ability to go back and revise the meeting minutes later?
I mean, if it's that important, I mean, we were just talking about the name of the meeting. It's not, it's, it doesn't change anything of what, of what later, how the meeting's set up. But I mean, you're welcome to always go back and revise the name. So you can approve the minutes.
Okay.
But if we just said, after the discussion, the administration agreed to share a presentation with the community. Then the board isn't involved at all. That's what we pretty much agreed, right? The administration is going to share a presentation with the community. If we do that, then the board's not involved at all. The board wasn't meant to be involved. This was meant to be the administration presenting facts about Prairie Crossing. So if we do it that way, then it's not even the board reaching a consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I, my concern is it's still considered a board meeting whether the board is present or not. And I just want us to make sure we're on the same page with, uh, with what we're calling it according to the rules. I don't like when we're making, I feel like this board, we're starting to make up things out of lack of experience, lack of understanding. And that's a slippery slope when we do that. So I'm just saying, let's, we can approve these minutes and make sure that we're using the right terminology moving forward. Let's not make it up.
No, I agree.
You know, we keep making things up and it's, it's concerning for me. Just, are we making it up out of expediency? Uh, but let's not do that. Let's do, let's do things the right way.
Brianna, did you have a concern about the wording in here? Can we just take out during a special meeting and just have it say after the discussion, the board came to consensus to share the presentation, November third? That it will include a general history of what the district has done in hopes of changing funding? Can we do that and approve the minutes like that? I think. Was there any other concerns, Brianna? So I, I would be comfortable with that. I think that's all we need to do. Joel, do you have any other opinions?
I think the administration can have public meetings whenever they want. I don't see this as a board action. I think we spent a lot of time with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't want to belabor this point. But we need more training because that's not how, if, if, uh, if we direct the administration to do a meeting, it's still considered a board meeting, okay? And I think we need to understand that. We can't skirt around issues and try to take what we think are easier paths. We, you know, let's let's make sure we're doing democracy the right way.
Well, I agree. We'll have Dr. Maycheck check with IASB. I think we can get to a consensus and approve the meeting minutes. And I will tell you that I have done more training in these last two years than I can possibly do. So I am always learning and continuing to grow. I welcome your feedback. And I think we're on the same page about moving forward with the minutes. I just want to address what Brianna brought up. And we're going to go ahead and address your items that you brought up. So does that sound fair? I want to make sure that I'm acknowledging all the items you addressed and also addressing why Brianna pulled it out of consent agenda. I think she's just trying to do the right thing. But I think we all accept your feedback and that we can get clarification from IASB.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. So can I get a motion to approve the August twenty-eighth governing meeting minutes? Striking the mention of a special meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Joel?
Aye.
Carla?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna? Amy?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, let's move on to item D, approval of the HR report. Can I have a motion to approve the HR report as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to vote no to the HR report again because we're not getting the background information we need on the hires. Uh, and when people resign to make, uh, for me to feel comfortable voting. We just had, uh, several citizen reports tonight saying how, and, and not just tonight, but the last several uh, board meetings talking about the low morale in the district. People are resigning. We, we don't, we're not reading this information for ourselves. So we're, I just feel really uncomfortable voting for something when we have a lack of information. So I'm going to continue to vote no on that, uh, report until we have enough education on what we're voting for. So my recommendation in moving forward is to not put the, um, that report, uh, I'm, uh, I want to make sure I get the name right, the human resources report slash information into consent agenda because I would prefer to vote on it separately. I will not vote on anything, uh, in, in my job as supporting our stakeholders in our district without having adequate information.
Is there another option for providing the information that Dr. Little's asking for other than using the hyperlink? Can it be attached in some other way? Is there another solution that we haven't considered?
Uh, we can, uh, give the board the report the way that we did it prior to, uh, this, um, the revision that, uh, we shared with the board last, uh, uh, April or last May. So just the hard copy, uh, hire reports for everybody. We can just, that, that used to be the, uh, human resources report.
Scanning in all the higher sheets?
Correct.
Is there any opposition to just board members requesting the higher sheets, like as a separate PDF file or a scan? Because we have some board members who feel like this is sufficient and then we have some that feel like it's not sufficient and would like to read through all their sheets.
I can make sure the board gets whatever the directive is to provide, so.
Do you, do you see a, um, adequate option there, Dr. Little, about having it as a separate attachment or requesting those higher sheets or?
I don't mind requesting the higher sheet, but you realize when I request it, all the rest of the board gets it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's same as providing it. Okay.
Okay, alright, well, I think let's call it, we'll, we'll call.
I have a standing request to ask for the higher sheets.
For the higher sheets.
And, uh, reasons for the resignation as well. I think those are important things for us to understand why people are leaving our district.
I agree. Can I have a motion to approve the HR report as presented?
So moved.
Thank you.
It was already, you already had a motion and a second and a third.
You're right. Uh, can I get a roll call vote, Laura, please?
Yes. Carla?
No.
Julia?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Motion carries five one.
Okay, thank you. Um, was that all the items for all the action items? That's what I have. Are we ready to move on to reports and discussions or would folks like a five-minute break?
I'm fine with moving.
I think we should move on.
Okay. Um. Alright. Written report and presentation on ISB proficiency guidelines. Uh, Dr. Maycheck, would you please introduce the presenter?
Yes, so, um, I, I have shared with the board that, um, prior to the start of this year, uh, the Illinois State Board of Education announced new proficiency levels for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. Virtually the proficiency level for each math and reading test in grades three through eight changed, as did the proficiency levels for the, um, eighth grade science test. And I asked Dr. Schrod to, uh, just provide an overview of what those changes were and, uh, what that might look like in terms of, um, the reports that you receive after this year's IAR testing.
Good evening. Uh, I'm looking forward to giving you an overview of the changes that the Illinois State Board of Ed have made. And as Dr. Maycheck mentioned, that will impact the scores that we see as we bring you data on a monthly basis. Uh, especially related to the Illinois Assessment of Readiness and the Illinois Science Assessment. So I want to start off with a couple of key definitions because I'm going to use these terms in the presentation. The first being performance levels. That's the score range that divide the full, uh, performance range across an assessment. And the state, the state of Illinois decides the cut scores and those score ranges, right? And so the new proficiency benchmarks will be as listed on this slide. And we'll talk about the cut score changes that Illinois made this year. And then those cut scores impact who we declare or who ISB declares as proficient, meaning meeting the standard of proficiency at benchmark at grade level. So the Illinois State Board of Ed uses performance levels, right, to make decisions about how they, uh, provide funding and support to schools. Uh, obviously, schools use, uh, performance data to make decisions about is teaching and learning working for our students. And then families make decisions based on performance levels of their individual kiddos as they come home with those score reports. The IAR or the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, and I know that Dr. Maycheck has regularly mentioned that my predecessor, Dr. Thomas, would come before the board every year and say Illinois has some of the most rigorous performance proficiency rates in the country. And the Illinois State Board of Ed, uh, mentioned the same thing as they went about this work. In fact, um, across, as an average, Illinois had, uh, benchmark for proficiency higher than forty-five other states previous to this year. And so if I was trying to liken that to MAP, which we had historically used here in the district, a student dependent on the grade level would have to have between a sixty-seven and a seventy-one percentile on the MAP in, in language arts to be considered proficient. Or, uh, in mathematics, between sixty-two and seventy-five percentile on MAP and math to be considered at grade level. If we look at that another way, in fact, in fourth grade, in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, in fourth grade, Illinois had the highest proficiency requirements nationally when we look at, uh, NAP and the Educational Center of Assessment. So based on that, the Illinois State Board of Ed decided that the score, the proficiency rates for ELA and math were set too high. And science was set too low. This led to a mislabeling of students and schools, right? So we identified the wrong students for advanced opportunities and we haven't identified too many students for intervening circumstances. We also had very different ways that we categorized this. And so for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, we used to have five categories. Does not meet, partially meets, approaching meets, meets expectations, exceeds. And then for the science assessment, we had emerging, developing, proficient, and exemplary, which caused confusion, right, as parents and others are reading those. And then for those of us who have high schoolers, right, the SAT, which is the assessment, uh, that our high school students take in the state of Illinois, had partially meets, approaching meets, meets expectations, exceeds. And so these very differing ways in which we talk about proficiency can be confusing to educators, let alone laypeople. And I mentioned, right, ELA and math were too high, science was too low. And here's the reason ISB believes that, right? They used the new Illinois Science Assessment scores from two thousand and twenty-one, which would have been right after we returned. And not everyone returned in the state of Illinois with expediency in two thousand and twenty-one, right? So we were not measuring as many students. The in-size of that group was not as large. And so we had an insufficient student population and so our representation wasn't as good. And so it resulted in a misalignment of performance. So ISB, the Illinois State Board of Ed, brought together hundreds of educators across eighteen months and did some review to help them, as they're calling it, right-size our performance levels. But they didn't just do it with educators and the State Board of Ed. They actually brought in technical assistance from the Center for Assessment. So it wasn't just about decreasing so that more kids look like they're proficient. It was working with experts to say, what does proficiency really look like? In fact, you'll see that educators from across the state, as well as content specialists, actually came together to write descriptors and rubrics for what proficiency at the standard, at the grade level, look like. And then compared the rigor of each assessment item against those rubrics. That led ISB to align these new benchmarks for proficiency. And the reason we're bringing this to you before we bring you IAR and ISA scores for this year is because it's going to have impact on our scores, right? So both language arts and mathematics, you'll see the old score in each grade level is higher, right? That's what we're talking about. And science is slightly lower, right? And that's different across different grade levels for math and for ELA. In fact, and again, ISB told us, and, and I want to credit the fact that much of this information you would be able to find right now on the ISB website because they did a webinar on August fourteenth, which is actually when the Illinois State Board of Education voted on these new proficiency scores. And so many of our school leaders were expressing anxiety, right, because we didn't have our IAR and ISA scores back because they couldn't give us proficiency levels until they voted and decided on what proficiency is. But for ELA and math, if we use this at the state level, last year in two thousand and twenty-four, about forty-one percent of students were considered proficient in the state of Illinois, uh, in language arts. This year, using updated proficiency scores, that number is at fifty-three. Same thing in math. We, the state of Illinois was at twenty-eight percent last year. And using the updated proficiency scores, they would, we would now be at thirty-eight across the state. And we have had a slight dip across the state of Illinois in what we say is our proficiency around science. Now, they have actively told us in the webinars that we've participated in, they're not going to show us a comparison between what we would have had and what we will have because they're, they're, um, incredibly invested in this change that they've made. Um, and so when we bring forward the scores, if the board has interest, we would have to do that internally if we wanted to show the difference using old cut scores versus new cut scores by grade level. But we could produce that. That's why we're bringing you this presentation first, if that makes sense. Any questions from the board?
Are you thinking that it would help us to convert the new scores to the old scores so we can see the difference?
Well, ISB claims that if we continue to use student growth, which is always a component of the state report card, that still uses raw scores. So the district could continue to see whether they're growing their students or not using the student growth score because it's always been based on the same cut score and whether kids grew in that band as opposed to these pre-prescribed five proficiency levels versus four. And I think that's part of the reason as well that they're reticent. It's because it's not comparing apples to apples. We used to have five proficiency levels and now we have four. So it's hard to truly compare how many would have been proficient because you also had that fifth proficiency level in the old system and now we only have four. level in the old system, and now we only have four. So we could bring forward the growth scores, which we have over time, and then see if that is helpful to the board. And they will show us, we will see historical data related to student growth.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation on summer programming.
I'm Tia Martinez, the Director of Educational Supports and Innovation, so I'm here to present to you overview of this past summer. So as most of you know, I started on July 1st, and so my first two days were spent at summer school, it was great. So the summer program is open to all of our students that are returning to Woodland and then the incoming kindergartners. Obviously, this past few years, we've had it at intermediate. Next year, due to some construction, we're going to probably house it at elementary. But one of the things that kind of sets our program apart from other programs in the area is that we do have a full day extended school year program, and we pretty much have a full day summer program in general, it's usually like 9 to 2:30. And then enjoy all the pictures, those are from the summer as well. Okay, so this is the enrollment and staffing. As you noticed, ESY staff went down while the WSI staff went up a little bit, but that's kind of been similar throughout the years, and you can see the enrollment has stayed pretty steady. So the goals really for summer school, yeah?
The change in the staff?
Because it sounds, from what I understand, since I didn't do the staffing, but from what I understand, it's because they implemented the integration of special ed kids within the classrooms, and so they hired some gen ed paras. So really, the goals of summer school are not only to integrate the special ed students with the regular ed students and to address IEP goals, but also to provide structured literacy and Math. And obviously, summer's supposed to have fun. So Risa sent out staff feedback surveys and parent feedback surveys, and the staff say that they really enjoyed the new special schedule, so they received specials three times a week this year. You know, they liked the ability to collaborate with the other staff, especially the dual teachers. And one of the big things is that most of the teachers would like to see more non-academic activities come up, so like, I've already had a proposal for like a gardening class and those types of things. So we're going to try to see if we can add some more fun, like adventure camp type classes. Parent feedback, really, the parent feedback, they always want summer school to go longer. That was one of the major things. I mean, that's really what it summed up, but the registration process through Skyward, they thought that was pretty easy. But again, parents also would like to see some more additional fun activities and classes, so that was interesting to see that both parents and staff really want additional fun activities and programming. More like life skill type things, like besides gardening, they also want like some cooking and like those types of classes. I think somebody actually also said archery, not that I'm going to be able to provide that, but we'll see. So this is the budget. Thank you, Mr. Boebek. So as you can see, the salary and benefits, and then the cost of the registration fees that offset some of the cost of summer school. So just next steps for next year, like I said before, I really want to explore more of adventure type classes and opportunities, also more like thematic weeks, like we're going to go camping one week, or we're going to go out into the sun, fun in the sun type of things, so those types of adventure classes could surround that as well. And then also just review the integration of the ESY, students and support staff allocations, and continue with math and reading intervention, because obviously, that's very important. And then one other thing is the implementation of the social emotional learning. I'd like to have a more structured social emotional, like lessons on a daily basis or even surrounding the theme of the week. And then I'm going to leave you with this video, and thank you to Brooke and her team for putting this together. Really, what it is, is just an overview of summer school, and then it's going to be used as a video to show up to parents for next summer when we want them to register for summer school.
This summer, unlock a new adventure right here at Woodland. Wildcat Summer Adventures is where fun meets learning, and every day feels like a new From creative projects to outdoor games, from art and music to drones and coding, there's something for every young explorer. Here's to sharpen the reading and master without even realizing it, because learning is part of the fun. It's three weeks of laughter, curiosity, friendships, and unforgettable summer memories, all in a safe, welcoming environment they already know. Whether your child loves science, stories, movement, or just trying something new, Wildcat Summer Adventures is the place to be. So why stay home when you can explore, build, play, create, and grow with us? Wildcat Summer Adventures, where summer shines in the W. Let the adventure begin.
Okay, are there any questions?
So I do have a question, and I apologize that I maybe should have asked this in advance, we have the data, but as far as the grade breakout for attendance at summer school?
The grade breakout?
Yeah, is it like mostly elementary?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, obviously, I can definitely get those for you, but I would say it's usually, it's heavy, it was heavy K through, I would say, fifth grade. There's some middle schoolers that actually do come, but that attendance is lower in middle school. Would you like me to get you the actual numbers?
No, no, definitely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just follow up to that, do you have a plan to attract more middle school students?
I mean, I'm going to try to attract as many people as I can, so yeah, I mean, I can certainly target, yeah. Well, the course offerings are going to help with that, right, if we make it more adventure, venture some, maybe more middle school students would want to attend. But yeah, definitely. Any other questions?
I just want to acknowledge, and I know you said you started in the middle, and I just kind of threw you into the fire, so thank you for that. But I think our staff, you know, I think they had like two days from the end of the school year, and then there was orientation and training, and then summer school started. And, you know, for a lot of our teachers and staff and administrators, their summer break really didn't start until after the Fourth of July weekend, and so I appreciate you giving up your time and all of our colleagues giving up their time. The kids looked like they had a lot of fun, I certainly enjoyed visiting and the drones and all that cool stuff, so it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The rest of the reports are written, were there any questions on any of the information shared in the following reports, items C through F?
In terms of the Stop the Bleed program, is this money that the board will have to come up with, this extra money?
Right now, it is. Actually, Officer Hanson wrote a grant, a stop grant through the Gurnee Police Department, although we haven't heard if we would receive dollars yet or not. The Stop the Bleed, purchasing those for our classrooms are part of our strategic plan. Through the relationship we have with the University of Illinois Chicago, we did get Stop the Bleed kits and training for middle school and intermediate school, but, so we don't have them in the classrooms yet, all the classrooms yet, at primary or elementary.
Then what's the plan to continue to ensure that staff and teachers are, administrators are continuously trained on Stop the Bleed?
So we, actually, part of our October 10th Institute Day is devoted to people, new people being trained who have not been trained, and then moving forward, we can make reviews part of our GCN, our modules, our regular professional training that staff are required to do at the start of the school year.
Yeah, because it's one of those programs that you really do need to be continuously trained.
Yes.
The requirement is every two years, and so our schools and our staff will be on that cycle.
Okay, good, good. Those are perishable deals, hopefully you never have to use them.
And this is part of our strategic plan, this is mandated?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions or comments? Seeing none, last on the report's agenda is Freedom of Information Act requests, and it looks like there were eight this month. Chris, can you please share some information on them?
Before we move to that, I do have a question about the administrator and teacher salary, publishing that.
Okay, what's your question?
When will that be published?
So it needs to be on our district, this one does not get published in the newspaper, this one actually goes onto our district website, and it's five days after you see the actual report and a scheduled board meeting. So there is an annual statement of affairs that does get published, that one has to be published before December 1st.
Okay, is that the people that are making 75 and above?
Yeah, they categorize them, they've got chunks.
Okay.
Where they, yeah, where they, those people.
So that goes into the paper?
That one goes into the paper. There was legislation to try to get it out of the paper, just on a website, because it costs district's money to put that, and technology is a little bit more prevalent, but that didn't happen.
Now, when it goes on our website, will it be like a database that people can search to see how much people make, or how is?
The reports, as you see them in the board packet, are going to be posted on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, just like that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Freedom of Information requests?
Okay, we had, and I would say no particular order, Sherry Reed from SmartBook here on 8-1, due 9-1, filed 8-26, looking for general purchasing records from 5/29/25 to the current request date of 8-1-25, looking for report in capital format and content to the attached report of an older request we had. Deveraux Johnson, Indiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting, received date 18, due 8-25, filed 8-25, looking for copies of any records of payment, requests for payment, waivers of lien, and certified payrolls from 5-1-25 to present, and copies of any records of progress notes, any correspondence with the awarded contractor and/or subcontractor from 5-1-25 to present date, this was for the playground resurfacing project. From Matt Coleman, received 8-18, due 8-25, filed 8-25, looking for a list of current elementary school principals, assistant principals, PE teachers, activities, coordinators, curriculum directors, student services directors, community engagement staff within the district, including their names, titles, and district email addresses. Jacob Long from Public Data Research, received 8-18, due 8-26, filled 8-26, looking for a all current employees' names, job titles, and employment start dates from current employees. Lake County Gazette, I'm feeling I have more easier time, Lake County Gazette, received 9-2, due 9-9, filled 9-2, looking for names and honors of all students in our high school recognized by the college board as AP scholars. Lake County Gazette again, received 9-8, due 9-15, filled 9-12, copies of contracts for all school principals in the district who will start the upcoming school year, and copies of all active teacher contracts for collective bargaining agreements. For the Lake County Gazette again, received 9-8, due 9-15, filled 9-11, names of all graduates from our middle schools who completed school year with the following fields, Yale and Destination High School, people that have been applying. We have Deveraux Johnson from Louisiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting, received 9-10, due 9-17, filled 9-17, looking for a copy of the signed contract to the awarded contractor and/or Safe Fall Inc., and the school district provided a copy of notice to proceed and a copy of the estimated completion date, a list of subcontractors applicable, any correspondence to include digital communications between the awarded contractor and school district between 8-25 and present date, and if there is any correspondence between Safe Fall and the district, they want an information from 1-1 through present date. And from Justin Winnig, received date 13, due 8-20, filled 9-11, this one actually went into spam, maybe we'll get it until later. They were looking for a report, so it says a check register expenditure report of purchase order history reflecting transactions from January 1st, 2022 to present date, looking at the purchase date, vendor name, description of goods and services, line item, quantity line item, price and/or amount.
Thank you. Moving on to board improvement and operations, there's a written report from myself on ISB and EdRed. There's one item that I need to bring up for board discussion, which is the Lake Division proposed bylaws revision and election of division officers. I will be attending the Lake Division meeting in October, and that's also open to other board members. I'm going to be voting on behalf of the board to approve these changes, so they're actually just looking to move from two to four directors at large, so I just need to bring it up for discussion. And I did email Laura Martinez, and she sent me a little background information, which I'm happy to share with you all. She said, "A board member from another district asks what the rationale was for increasing the number of directors at large. There's two main reasons. The executive committee is asking the Lake Division to increase the number from two to four, because with only six currently on the board, if they meet and any one or two members are missing, they do not have a quorum to do business, and secondly, most importantly, this is their attempt to help with member engagement. So by bringing on another 12 board members, let's see, this is an opportunity to bring another 12 board members directly in contact with the division officer. If any of those 12 talk with other Lake Division board members, the exponential reach of our work grows with each member." So with four at-large officers, they can assign bigger tasks around member engagement by having them visit all 45 districts in Lake County. With six, we need to visit seven and a half boards throughout the year. With eight, only five and a half boards per year. We also have a couple of potential board members who want to be on the executive board, and this will open up two more opportunities for them to serve our division. So they feel like it's a win-win, and Laura says they'll be voting in favor of the amendment on October 8th. Is there any feedback based on that? Do we feel, is there a board consensus to go ahead and vote for this amendment?
Do you recommend it?
I think her background information she provided was sound, especially if they have people that are interested in filling those positions, it could help.
Is it like an election, Ben? Is that how it works?
Yeah, each board gets one vote, so I would cast our vote close.
I mean, for the person, then, eventually? Is that how it works?
There's a slate for Lake Division officers will be voting on. So the slate includes direct- So, the slate includes Director Mark Tepper again, um, Chair Michael Francisco, Vice Chair Jim Batson, Resolutions Chair Odie Paul from fifty-six. There's two directors at large, Stephen Mack and Eileen Maloney. So, um, this would have been your ISB email from September fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah, I read it.
Yeah, so.
I'm, I'm glad to have the background, because I was wondering why they were adding the positions. I figured it had something to do with being able to have a larger reach, right, to, to, um.
Directors, yeah.
Doesn't seem like a lot when you consider the number of schools.
Yeah, we usually, like, no offense, but we don't, we usually don't get Laura because she's booked, and it's. We have to get someone outside of our region, which they're all fantastic, but, uh, it sounds like this would help. Anybody else have a comment or opinion or questions?
I'm fine with increasing to four.
Can you say that again?
If we're looking for consensus.
Huh?
If we're looking for consensus, I would be okay with increasing to four.
Okay, thank you. I think it makes sense. Anybody else? Okay. Um, the next committee update is one regarding PTA from Brianna. Does anyone have any questions for Brianna? Are there any additional updates from any other committees to report? Yes, yes.
Um, too full, um, the meeting was too full. We discussed the budget, took a, made a, the final budget. Something that, um, has also been happening, I've been talking about the work we consented in the financial reports. Relating to the financial, like, you live in Denver, so it's very long. And we're talking about potentially modifying it, so, uh, there's a couple of different ways that we're looking at the same information with some of these reports, so it's almost like we keep the information for, for the reports. So, we're trying to make it a little bit easier on the eye, making sure we still capture the same information, but don't, the, the same information we treated earlier. So, what we want to do is we want to present back to the board, um, in October, we'll have a cover sheet. Let's take a look at it. If the board is in agreement, that's wonderful. Otherwise, we can certainly go back to the same board, of course, the.
I just want to mention that, uh, there's a new committee, the Shared Services Committee, between Woodland and, I guess it's among, Woodland and District Fifty-Six and One Twenty-One. And that first meeting is next Wednesday, October the first, uh, at, um, at Warren, at the boardroom at, in District One Twenty-One. I can't, I don't, I don't recall who our representatives are.
Myself.
And Joel, yes.
Carrie and Joel.
Yeah.
I thought that made sense.
Uh, Dr. Correa and Dr. Weisman and I met yesterday, and one of the things we talked about was, um, drafting an agenda for that meeting. So, it's, uh, I'm looking forward to just be a really good conversation.
Yeah.
Looking forward to hearing about that. Um, any other updates anyone wants to share? Okay, um, moving along to board improvements, um, the ISB Board Governance Workshop. Um, due to a change in circumstances, the October sixteenth date no longer works. So, Dr. Maycheck has already emailed Laura Martinez, um, to see if we can get some other dates. So, we will sort that out via email at a later time.
Well, you've got, uh, she did get back to us with dates, so you have them in your.
Oh, oh, this year? Oh, okay, I'm going off of this, and, okay, thank you for telling me where to look. Okay, so we're looking at these dates, October twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, or November tenth, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, or December second through the eighteenth.
Well, the tenth is a holiday, no? Oh, no, that's October. I'm thinking, I'm thinking October. I'm getting my month, that's it, sorry.
So, the twelfth, there is a PTA meeting that evening, so I don't know that you're gonna wanna do in the workshop in one with the, um, PTA meeting.
And the thirteenth is the policy meeting.
Okay, that helps narrow it down.
And then, um, um, December sixteenth is our board meeting.
December sixteenth is a no, okay.
Bless you.
Let's see, that's, okay, got it narrowed down a little bit.
And then we do have, like, musicals and talent shows and things like that. I don't know who that goes, the, the dates are. I don't know, is that what the faculty members?
Have they middle school?
Yeah, definitely.
Um, so we've got, you know, for the, um. So, it's the exception of the seventeenth of December is the Wood, Wood, Woodland Middle School Talent Show. And then also the food drive is on the fifteenth, scheduled for the fifteenth also.
The food drive? Is that not fill the bus? Is that Lenace?
Uh, that's, uh, our district food drive is Monday, the fifteenth.
And you said the seventeenth is a talent show?
I don't know what that.
Can I interrupt, please?
Yeah.
Yep.
I couldn't hear anything Laura said.
Sorry.
So, I'm wondering if, to save time, if we could do the scheduling over email.
I think that'd be easier for me.
Just provide the dates that were available out of those listed? Is that the best way to?
Mm-hmm. Is it okay if we narrow it down from what we've done at the meeting, and then just send the remaining dates via email?
And we assume a seven.
I was thinking of just making a doodle poll and sending that out once, once I get the dates that I couldn't hear from Laura.
Say that again?
Once I get the dates that were already discussed, I was thinking of sending out, it's called a doodle poll. Where you can just mark which dates work for you.
Yep.
And it compiles everybody.
Okay, you're, you're willing to do that, the doodle poll?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is everybody okay with that?
Perfect.
All right, uh, discussion of ISB board agreements. Oh, okay, um, we've received the summary of the work that we did during the Starting Right Workshop. The next step is for us to develop our board agreements. Does anyone have any suggestions as us, as how we'd like to proceed with that? Brianna, you made me the copies, right?
Yeah.
How have you done this in the past?
So, if you see the email from Dr. Hill in the board, in Board Book, the following are the next steps that you identified. So, bullet points number one, two, three, four, and five, we could discuss tonight, 'cause there, like, I noticed in edits of some things and questions about things, or we could table until next month.
I mean, it's nine twenty.
Yeah, cool. Is everyone okay with cabling this till next month? We can walk through it with Brianna, and maybe Mike will be with us. Huh?
Okay.
So, next month, we'll review and approve it, the board agreements, that the plan is?
I think we'll just move our discussion to next month.
But I mean, how, how, like, how does this get discussed? Like, we discuss it in this meeting? We need to review it and give our feedback?
Right, and then, then it's approved in the next meeting, like, how long, yeah.
So, are we, are we asking that we review the document between now and the next meeting and provide feedback to Brianna, or what's the?
Well, she has specific notes here, so if you're on item fifteen B under board improvements, on the Starting Right Letter from Dr. Hill, um, the first item is con, consider identifying the board policy, clarifying the process for a board member to request an item for this, an item for agenda inclusion, and we were going to add as per policy to colon twenty-two, or two hundred twenty.
Okay.
Um, I think it would be nice if in the board packet that these items were on the attachment, so everyone can see them, like, what, what I'm referring to. So, this is his letter. I have the.
Luckily, we all have the board policy manual.
Oh, the.
But I mean, can't, if he has recommendations of things that, I mean, obviously, there's no discussion needed. You just need to look it up, find it, and add it. Can someone just look it up, find it, and add it?
Mm-hmm.
I would just agree as a board, um, I'll make it as a next.
Okay.
Well, right, but like, I don't know, redline it or whatever with the additions, and then we read it between now and the next meeting, and then we say if we agree, or if we wanna make changes from there.
Mm-hmm.
We're just trying to look for an expedient way to do this. I don't wanna go word for word over
Each, um.
Something that is, I mean, especially where it's just like, add a board reference. We, I mean, there's not really.
You'd like this to reflect, kinda like, when you review policies, and it's in red or blue based on why the changes were made, and so, is that something we can provide?
Well, I could, I think, um, maybe Dr. Maycheck could help my memory. Did Dr. Hill send the board agreements to us as a Word document? If so, then we could have the original, and then an edited one at the next meeting?
Yes, he did send it as a Word document.
He did send it as a Word document. Yeah, Laura says he sent it as a Word document.
Okay, so we could have the original, and then compare it to the edited one.
So, would you like, uh?
And, and potentially approve it next month, if everybody's happy with the edited one? Or we could just actually make changes, further changes at the next meeting?
Would you like us to send to the entire board, the Word docs, or is there gonna be one person kinda collecting and making edits and changes, maybe the board secretary?
Well, I mean, there's some things, right, that are like notes of things that have to be addressed, or should be addressed, or however.
So, we edited the document already.
Right.
So, are we talking about taking a document that we left that meeting with and editing it further?
Um, so he means doesn't.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause the first two points on his letter were policy change, changes to policies we should make, because our board agreement is not in alignment with board policies, right? I think those were the only two, and it's all the rest were like suggestions.
Yeah, I think this, this first one was identify the board policy, clarifying this process, and it was policy
Yeah.
to two hundred twenty. And then, the next bullet point, it said, um, do we wanna change the policy to include Amy or the Vice President, or no? And then the third bullet point, um, is should the board draft a common response? So, when somebody, consider empowering the superintendent to ensure that the district develops standard email reply verbiage with which to reply to citizens who email the board when the citizen emails the board, if a board member or district does news.
And Brianna, if you want, I'm willing to work with you on drafting something for the board.
Okay.
Okay, so we can come back to this?
If anybody sees, if anybody sees changes to the actual two-page board agreement, then they should go to, uh, the question, Joel?
Yeah, that's fine.
If I can read more together.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, so Joel and Brianna.
Yeah.
Okay, see this at the next meeting. All right, thank you. Um, there were two emails to the board for the month of September, but neither of them require a response from the board, as Dr. Maycheck has emailed each of them, and we wanna thank Dr. Maycheck for doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, at this point, are there any more public comments?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Um, do any board members see the need to return to closed session?
No, but I do have a question, um, about the eighth grade curriculum and the field trip. Um, you know, in the past, uh, far distance, fast, uh, the eighth grade field trip was to Springfield, Illinois, and then it was changed to the boat trip, and then, I think, last year it was arcade or something.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess my question is, um, why? I, 'cause I don't remember why. Uh, the eighth graders no longer go to Springfield to learn, you know, about civics and see that in action down there. I think especially with where we are in the country, and possibly us not understanding what it takes to be a democracy. Um, I wonder if that was in the best interest of our students to not provide them with that education? And how, how, how has it, how do we do it since, you know, and has that been sufficient? And I know it's gonna be hard to say whether or not that's been sufficient over the years, but just concerning since we don't, um, it seems like, yeah, we're getting away from civi, civics education and understanding the importance of state and local government and voter registration. So, just curious as to, are we doing our part as an educational institution? Are we part of the problem?
Not that it's a picture.
I will, uh, I could certainly follow up with Tiffany for the history, uh, for, the history of, of when that trip stopped in line in the court back.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Julia? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Mike? Brianna?
Yes.